Well, good morning. I declare formal call of meeting to order and ask Dave if you'll do the offer to give him a prayer for us.
Thank you. Judge Pocum Zol Keltz. Good morning to each of you. It's good to see you, Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Freywe, Mr. Kelton, Commissioner Worley, Jennifer Sharon, County Attorney. Anyway, what can you say? Brownie County is a good place to live. Just remember that you've got folks that are rooting for you every step of the way. Quick word on Judge Lilly. He told Bob Contreras Satterby that he felt like he'd been hit by a train. He told me some less dramatic things, but he is pushing to get to a sitter. Doesn't sound, that's basically a sitter for a week or two and then staying with his parents in the metroplex. So he is on the healing. And what I'd like to do, I'd like to pray for the judge, but I'd like to pray for any of y'all, any of your family members, anyone that we have in general. I want to pray for healing, but I'd like to read a brief scripture of Psalm 103, verse one. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and all that is within me. Bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and forget not all the benefits. Who forgives all your iniquities? Who heals all your diseases? Who redeems your life from destruction? Who crowns you with loving kindness and tender mercies? Who satisfies your mouth with good things so that your youth is renewed like the eagles? Let's stand for the pledge and remain standing for our Lord. I pray with pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Father, we come to you in Jesus' name. Father, we look for you for guidance, Lord, for wisdom, as these commissioners were God and other folks. Father, as they work, Father diligently on the budgets that they're working on, committees that they serve on, Lord God, Father, they need wisdom and they need guidance, Lord. And we pray that you would bring them to that. Heal all our residents that are ill. Keep us all healthy, safe, protected, and well. And may the Lord keep you and praise you. May he cause his face to shine upon you and give you peace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dave. Item three, citizens' comments. I'm not aware of any of those. Sharon, you hadn't received any, have you? Item four, consideration approval of minutes from the September 14th meeting.
No, it was September 21st. There was another, it was fixed. It was fixed.
Well, it says.
It does say that, but I've got the original one that says.
Okay, 20. Okay, are there? Okay, once again, no. Okay, so previous meeting, how about that one? Got a motion?
Yes.
Second, all in favor? Are there any treasurers or auditor reports today? Okay. I will take the bills to the end and then take just item 7A. What if we can? This is a burn ban. Any action on the burn ban?
No.
Leave it off?
Please stay off.
Okay. So it would be no action taken on A, burn ban remains off. 7B is Lisa Dick, Administrator, Brown County Health Department. Update on COVID-19 response and county health initiatives. Good morning.
Good morning. So I think we're at a much better place. And so I feel good about sharing that with y'all this morning. I looked back when two weeks ago, we had, there had been more positives, but situation overall looks better. We had 700 positives at that time. We have 815 now. Our active cases was 119 and it had been running at over 100 for, since the middle part of August. And now we're at 67. The number recovered was 555 and it's 718. We had 26 deaths and now we're at 30 deaths. So that is, it's not a positive. School age children, I included that today. Two weeks ago, we had 86 school age children and today we have 97. Our negatives have gone up quite a bit, 3,318 to 3,931. And a big portion of that is because nursing homes are required to test twice a week until our testing rate is below 10%. So as those tests occur, we're putting them in, we're hoping that as we're having fewer positive cases, that number will go down. Last, two weeks ago, we had six people in the hospital and today we don't have any. On Friday, we moved to none.
None?
None, zero. So I feel like the situation is slowing down some. I think we have some challenges that are coming in the future. We have a challenge of COVID and flu season happening at the same time. So I encourage everyone to go ahead and get your flu vaccine and then hopefully sometime in the future, we will have a vaccine that can help us control COVID.
I had a lady call me and she said her bed's in the nursing home. She could go in there, she could get a test, but she couldn't find nobody to give her a test. And then she did find one somewhere, but it's going to charge her $250. Is that the real deal?
I don't know. The funds that I've heard weren't $250. There's some that charged $150. That's definitely where your insurance will pay. Most insurances are only paying for you to be tested once. And so that's kind of where the problem occurs is that there's only one testing. I'm not sure that I would want to waste it now whenever I'm well. It might be better to spend that one test that the insurance is going to pay for if I'm positive. So there are some other testing options. One is CBS. You can Google online and fill out their paperwork and then they will schedule you if you meet their requirements. I can't find what the requirements are, but because of the questions that they ask, I'm assuming that you either have to have a contact or you have to be positive, have some of those symptoms. And so, yes, that's one of the issues that we're facing. We have ordered two testing machines and testing supplies, but we don't even have a delivery date on that yet. So I don't know when that date is going to be. So we will be able to provide maybe possibly some of those testings just kind of depending on the need at the time and the availability of other tests. So I'm saying, I know that it's so important for them to get back to the nursing home. It's that prioritization. Are we giving this test to someone that needs it to be well, one to protect other people? Or do they need it to be able to go in and visit? And so it's a really hard decision because mental health is also at stake here too when we're talking about going in and visiting with our parents and loved ones in those nursing facilities.
So would they have to get a test every time they go check on their loved one?
Right now, I'm assuming that that's what they're doing, that it's going to be similar to what it looks like for those nursing home workers where they're being tested two times a week. So that's not the answer you wanted to hear, I know, but I don't know.
Who's doing the one for the nursing home? Are they doing all the?
They're contracting. Most of the nursing homes are owned by corporations and then corporations are contracting with bigger companies that are coming in and doing those testing.
Well, I guess considering the fact that school has been open for a few weeks, that's actually pretty good.
Yes.
The report, I mean, considering.
Agreed.
Any other questions for Lisa? Appreciate you coming in and giving us updates.
We do have flu shots at the Walson at that health department.
I'm sorry, was there any other questions? And that was my question, so. Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Item C is Daryl Johnson, Emergency Management Coordinator. Consideration possible approval of action regarding ratification of the Brown County interlocal agreement for dispatch services, which that includes several people here, sheriff two, I believe.
Morning.
Good morning, Daryl.
I did some homework and I'm a little bit prepared this time. Apologize to last night, but came in blind. Blind and not ready. Daryl mentioned we've got Calver here for.
You have backup, you have backup today.
Yes, sir. All right, so we've got the dispatch agreements, some copies to share with you.
Thank you, sir.
And also got some cheat sheets to go with it. Kind of refer to some. Okay, so nicely, it's a 10-year agreement. We've renewed it for five years. Broke down into two sections. The first section being Article 3, 3.1 is the dispatch center cost. The second part is 3.3. 3 is the PSAP agreement. Most of the money is broke down by personnel costs. So in the dispatch agreement includes personnel costs, also equipment and infrastructure costs and operations fees. And that is based on calls for service. They make calls, emergency calls they receive each year and field. The PSAP part is broken down by the population, percentage of the county population, City of Brownwood, City of Banks, City of Hurley, and Slank. 66.7% of those personnel costs are included in the dispatch cost. And the third, 3.3%, that's up to the PSAP cost. Again, the personnel cost and on this sales spreadsheet, you can follow along, total personnel cost for the dispatchers is $98,000, $780. And the receptionist, right below that is $4,000, excuse me, $54,000, $743. On the dispatchers, 66.67% of that comes out of the dispatch center cost, 100% of the receptionists. The PSAP cost is just the actual call techers who answer the 911 calls. So that's why the receptionists are covered in this on the initial dispatch center calls. So you factor that by the 60, by the percentages, that comes out to the county's portion of that being $173,657.12. And that would be a recurring cost subject to the cost adjustment each county or each district. The equipment cost is $204,013. That's county's portion of that is $35,000, excuse me, $53,655.42. There shouldn't be much recurring cost of that following years. This is the upgrade. So going forward, it will be, where that would come in place, say, population grew or calls for service and they had to add another dispatcher or something like that. We shouldn't see very little increase there in the next few years. There is a gap on that if we look at it. Infrastructure, $71,893. County's portion of that, which is the 26.3%, comes out to $184,597.86. D is the, excuse me, C is, D is the operational cost. And that's the fee we pay or the system will pay to LCRAs, $50 a month for each of the five dispatch consoles, or four dispatch consoles if the larger one is considered, one at the EOC, the fire space. So that comes out to $3,000. Brown County's portion of that is $789. And there's a fee for the conventional interface. What that interface does is takes one of the VHF channels and ties it to the 700 channel. And that covers interoperability stuff where they can, somebody comes in out of the county, time in our system, they talk. So Brown, City of Brownwood's paying $600 for one interface, county's paying $600 a year for the other interface. So that brings us to $1389 for the operational costs. Again, all these costs in the dispatch agreement are subject to cost increases each year depending on cost going up on personnel or equipment. LCRAs has the agreement, now that's what we're paying them to upkeep that equipment. So any upgrades or anything as far as software and things, they're going to take care of. So for the dispatch center part of it for 2021, we're looking at $413,299.42. The recurring cost next year going forward should be around $175.45. Again, subject to the increases. And we drop down to the PSAP. That's based on $98,300, or $280. That's based on 33.33% of the personnel costs of the dispatch. And again, this is based on changes in the population. County's population is 36.9%. People not included in municipal, in city limits. County's portion of that comes out to $111,707.64. That should be a recurring cost also. So that brings the total for dispatch center cost plus the PSAP cost to $525,704. The recurring cost should be around $286,753.75. Okay, so for the 2021 budget, Brown County is budgeted $265,000. $125,000 was in the dispatch subsidy, 911 subsidy. And then the balance, which is $140,000, was budgeted in another item for the radio project. So the difference for 2021 is $260,007.14. Part of this, or a big part of it, is the radio system upgrade, which is a one-time deal. So it might be something you want to consider rolling over in the tax note or however the financing comes out. Going forward, for next year thereafter, you're looking at around $21,000 shortfall that must already budget to be considered next year.
Which I talked to Vance, we're also going to have an income. We don't have a budget anywhere from the jail if we pass another resolution which will offset that, I believe, right?
$38,000.
So we'll actually have an offset there. Cover that, I believe.
The personnel costs will be payable monthly and that's in 2.2, or 3.2. Most of the rest of the costs will be as they are incurred.
Okay. Only thing I had a question about, and you and I spoke about it a little bit over on page five, is the deal where it's going to be, they can go up to 25% change from year to year without, without, without us having any discussions about it, so.
Three point four, maximum annual adjustment for the cost. And that's for the, mostly for the personnel, but it covers all the dispatch center costs. If they go over 25% above what they were in the previous year, 25% or 100, it just becomes automatic. If it goes over 25%, it has to come back to all the parties involved.
That was originally open-ended for the raise and we kind of got together with the department here and the administration and somehow it's gone up to 25%. Maybe Banks dropped that number.
See, Bert. Are you comfortable with having a 25% change from year to year without us being in a loop?
That's not a.
I mean, we got a board, but we only have two people on that board.
Yes. It's a lot of board.
Well, what do you call it now? No, it's like committee.
It's, it's a committee. The name has changed in there.
Well, it's like, it's like the Alums Committee, they can bring a recommendation to the court or whatever, so, but we, we're not overly heavily represented on this, but.
Any cost adjustments would be taken two months before the next, but.
If it exceeds 25%? If it's not going to exceed.
It's a requirement.
Okay. So you're comfortable with 25% from year to year?
That's not a, that's not a legal question. That's just a.
Are you comfortable with 25% change for that? That's what I, I had a little red flag there personally that, I haven't seen a lot, but I don't want it to end the whole, I don't want to run the whole deal.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's reasonable.
You probably won't be 25% very often with it.
No. Well, that's 25% of $150,000 is pretty good.
We saw a jump in rates.
We should. That's pretty, that's pretty hefty raise. All the equipment and everything already paid for and everything.
Jennifer, I thought that there was more than $265,000.
There's $300,000 in equipment as well.
Yes, it, what, 140 plus 300, right?
Well, the 140 plus the 110, and then there's $300,000 in equipment.
Say that again, gentlemen?
There's $300,000 in equipment that's being budgeted. So we're at $565,000.
We're talking about what we're going to go out for?
Well, Joe, down at the bottom, see if you notice where it says actual expenses and then it says budgeted $265.
Right.
That's, that's actually.
It's actually 300.
Actually $565,000. So actually it is, it is budgeted. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, but I was just, so.
We have a dispatch line, a 911 for this one item, and then there's an equipment one for $100,000.
Are there any other questions on this? I showed, I told you, I told you my only one concern, but no way I seem overly concerned about it, I guess.
Well, it's concerned, there's no doubt about that. But I think we can all feel comfortable.
Okay.
Because I'd be surprised, disappointed together. I'd be disappointed if I'd be done. But anyway, we got.
Well, in that case, I'll, I'll ask, I'm sorry, then I'll ask for a motion to, to approve the interlocal agreement between Brown County and City of Brownwood for dispatch services.
One more time, Shane, are you comfortable with this agreement?
Yes.
Jennifer, are you comfortable with it? Therefore, I'll, I'll move that this court approve the interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Brownwood, Brown County, the City of Hurley, and the City of Banks for dispatch services.
Sir. Any other discussion? All in favor? That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Sharon, do we have one for Joe to sign? I mean, this one is, the copy is.
I have the original.
She has the original.
Do you have the original? Would you like Joe to sign it now, Julie?
Oh, we're fixing to do another one for then, we can just do them all, I'll wait, sign them afterwards if you want to, if you want to hang around for everything.
I'll wait.
All right. Item D is Vance Hill, Sheriff, consideration of possible approval of action to enter into an agreement with the City of Brownwood governing the operation of the law enforcement center and the usage of the jail, county jail.
Good morning, how's everybody?
Doing well, Sheriff, thank you. And you? And if you'd like to, you can remove your mask because public speaking is one of the exceptions. It's entirely up to you.
I got the voice of a newspaper reporter too. This document is entitled Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Governing the Operation of the Joint Law Enforcement Center and the Usage of the Brown County Jail, bound between the City of Brownwood and Brown County. Now, what we've done is renegotiated this operations contract. The city's reducing their inmate bed jail space from 12 inmates to three inmates at a rate of $35 per day. So in effect, that's going to bring in just over $38,000 to the county for me to guarantee them three beds per day throughout the entire year. And then it just basically duplicates the current agreement that we have with the City of Brownwood specifically on the utility cost. And the only thing different on this is the city's requesting ownership of their portion of the building to be put in their name to be used for. Any specific questions that y'all have about it?
That'd be a, sort of needing to read if you've been going through that.
Transfer of ownership for part of the building, is that acceptable?
There's no problem with that.
Okay.
The original agreement when we built that building was sharing costs, providing beds, you know, it was, it's now run out. It's a now work.
It was a 20-year contract. But there's no, no legal ramifications about two different entities owning the site, owning part of the same building?
Yeah. That just happens all the time.
The only thing I really have questions about is the way that some of the utilities were divided up, like we're paying 90% of the water and gas. Speaking with Penny and the chief a little bit ago, that's basically what we're doing now, is the 90%. Because we have the inmates.
You've got the bigger shit.
Right, yeah.
Or we do.
After that was explained to me, I have no issues with that.
Do we have the, we made it the 25% adjustment for year without?
No, I guess we did.
I'm just curious.
And one other thing covered in this agreement is the lawn maintenance, where the city's going to reimburse us for half of the lawn maintenance and also half of the janitorial that we currently have before. So it's two additional things that we'll be seeking reimbursement for.
So the standards will still be under our, that is paid, or that, okay?
What's the terms? What's the terms, term, term of this agreement?
10 years.
10 years? The cost of the county beds in the jail, is that $35 going to be for 10 years, or?
You mean the city beds in the county jail?
Do what?
The city beds in the county jail?
Right.
And there's clauses in here that we can renegotiate, which are 12 months notice.
Well, I'm just thinking that at some point, $35, well, say eight years from now, $35 may not cover the cost.
And we've been charging the 25 from the municipality for the last 20 years.
Right. But I know we've got contracts with several other counties, and they are a little higher.
Right, other counties are $15 per day.
Right. So that's what I was asking is.
Of course, those aren't quite.
10 years.
Those aren't quite seat beds either.
At $35 a bed, that might not cover the cost at some point in the future, so.
And they don't, they use very.
I understand. I think those are, that's the only question I had about it.
Anybody else have any question on that? Well, I guess.
Mr. Schoffer, do you have the original or what?
Yes, sir, I do.
Well, or is there another question, then I'll entertain a motion on item D.
I move we, this court, approve the interlocal cooperation agreement governing the operation of the Joint Law Enforcement Center and the usage of Brown County Jail by and between the City of Brownwood and Brown County.
Same. No other discussion? All in favor? Do you want to take just a minute to finalize paperwork with the city so they can go about their business right quick?
Well, she's probably got something to do with this.
Well.
With the LCRI, too, I don't know.
Is that, that's the RA, is that what it'll be between us and the city, or is that just, or is that, are they, are they involved in that?
That's just us and the LCRI.
So Shane, if you properly just sign those, without any, without protein or whatever on there. Looks like it's created by a lawyer. It's got a place for sharing to attest, do you want to see it?
She's got to attest, Paul.
I have to have a copy of it.
She has to have a copy.
Have to seal it, too.
Uh, one of them's going to have to have Hurley and Banks on it also.
I've got to seal it, there are seals in my own, this is my original. I'm not getting the original back.
There's several copies of both of them there. Because each, each entity gets a copy.
Pierce, Pierce, you're way on down the line, have you got time to wait while we go through all this?
Oh, sure, sure.
You're retired, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a pretty lengthy agenda, so, and you're near the end. Are you ready to proceed without me?
No, because I'm.
Nope, 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 nope. Sorry, wait, wait, let's let her get started. Has everyone signed the agreement, I mean, has everybody else already agreed to this agreement?
Yes, sir, Banks' mayor has not signed yet because he's been out of town, but they have a petition to do.
Let me go seal it, I'll be right back.
I think I've got a contract with Mason County.
Thank you, Sharon. Now we'll go to item E, Vance Hill, consideration of possible approval of action regarding authorization to enter in the contract with Mason County, to house Mason County inmates.
Well, I'd like to pass on that, when I received the contract, there was some issues with some wording, so I sent it back to.
So we're going to pass on E. Item F is consideration of possible approval of action regarding authorization to enter into an interlocal cooperative, cooperation, I'm sorry, agreement with the Lower Colorado River Authority for radio services and equipment.
Uh, this document is entitled Interlocal Cooperation Agreement for Radio Services and Equipment Between Brown County, Texas and the Lower Colorado River Authority. And basically, it's just an agreement of the contract that we're into for the work that they're going to do here in Brown County. It lays out the acceptance, user's access to the trunk radio system, service cost sharing basis for radio service, service rates, charges and terms, of maintenance of user equipment, expansion of trunk radio system, term, automatic renewal, service interruptions, interference, assignments of contract, the coverage, default remedies, warranties, disclaimer of warranties, interruption of service, limitations of liability, and users hereby agreed and identified, get the issue with LCRI, notices, no common carrier offerings, tactile consequences, amendment waiver, severability, governing law, no oral agreements, reviews, confidentiality, and interlocal certification.
That doesn't sound like much, how many pages is that?
12.
13.
13 for the signature.
So we've all discussed this at different times at length, so.
And I presented it to Mr. Brett and Tommy, for all the issues that he has.
Is this basically the same one that the city's, agreement that the city's done, have you already done this one?
Yes, sir, that was approved last week.
Last week.
I'll hand it to her right now, we can get God's side.
I guess we could like kiss the original, if that's what you wanted to do.
Is there any other discussion we need to have on that, does he need to speak to us on anything representative from the LCRI? I forgot his, I forgot your name, forgive me.
Oh, Larry, Larry Brown.
Larry, Larry's such a hard name.
It's got to come.
Do you have a recommendation on this?
I would recommend we enter into the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Where's the point, we're going to take action here, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I might be, to enter, to enter with the interlocal agreement with the Lower Colorado River Authority for the radio services and equipment and all stated by Vance Hill previously.
And we got a motion in a second, is there any other discussion, anything else we're missing here? If not, I'll call for the vote. Is that passing unanimous? Okay. Sign it here and print it, if they want. That's good. All right, item G is consideration of possible, so Vance Hill, I'm sorry, Sheriff, consideration of possible approval of action regarding authorization to enter to the scope of work, terms and conditions with the Lower Colorado Authority for the countywide radio project.
Well, basically, this is just the terms and condition of what LCRI is going to be doing and providing for us. It's laying out specifically the types of radios, of costs, cost sharing. Only thing we'll need is for this form to be completed, I guess, by Ms. Robinson, as far as the billing process, and also a signature with you and LCRI.
So that includes, which we were just trying to discuss pretty much like, I think, last presentation for the fire departments was a Plan A. I believe it was Plan A they came up with, and then there were a few things come up since then, they added a few batteries and something for his, what I was doing.
Uh, I believe this is all inclusive of everything, and this is the latest version of what's been negotiated.
I'm sure there's a dollar amount somewhere at the bottom that we'd like to hear.
Uh, my office is $308,084, Constable's office is $25,042, Volunteer Fire Department's is $822,311. The man trailer's $4,808, Emergency Management is $38,249.
And that discount, is that in there that we talked about for the fire department?
Dollar discount is actually shown, it will be, uh, exhibit A, table C. The price run one day is $198,000 for radios down to one day is $98,000. Sorry, I don't have a page number.
Yes, it's on exhibit A, table C.
Did I get all the information you need, Jennifer, when we get through that, we should be able to proceed with our other loan, we figured what we need, what we're at, we're, we have numbers yet to go out for the, the loan or whatever.
Capital lease.
Capital lease? Do you have a recommendation on that?
I recommend that we enter into the scope of work, terms and conditions with the Lower Colorado River Authority.
You have to get those figures, Jennifer.
It's less than we initially thought.
I might multiply entering the, regarding the objects entered in the scope force, terms, conditions, the Lower Colorado River Authority for the countywide radio project.
Motion, do we get a second? Got a second from Larry, any other discussion? If you can take it out, all in favor?
Yeah.
unanimous again. All right, Vance Hill, Sheriff, once again, consideration of possible approval of action regarding authorization to enter into the interlocal, or interagency, I'm sorry, communication site lease agreement between Brown County and Texas DPS.
Okay, this document is entitled, interagency communication site lease agreement between Texas Department of Public Safety and Brown County. Uh, what this agreement does is authorize us to place the LCRI equipment on the main tower that's controlled by DPS. Pretty standard agreement, it looks like to me, there's no per bull issues that I have with it at all. Right, exactly. And that would just require your signature, Commissioner, and then, once we get some more information, we'll have to put the description of what exactly is going to be in this column, so.
The equipment, the actual column. Okay, I understand we're going to do electrical upgrades on site, I heard that from somebody else, and hence, we'll be paying a. I heard that from somebody else, and hence, we'll be paying a fee every year to access that tower.
Yes, and when I presented my budget, that fee was twenty thousand dollars a year, and it's been reduced to fifteen thousand.
Emily said they negotiated that down a little bit, so we appreciate all the help we can give, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to, to enter the, interagency agreement with DPS?
I move we approve the interagency communication site lease agreement between Texas Department of Public Safety and Brown County.
Second. You have a second. Any other discussion, all in favor? And out of passage unanimous also. Now, we're down to more of the down home things. Yeah. Consideration of possible approval of action regarding additional cameras for the jail security system. Vance Hill, Sheriff, once again.
Uh, we have Guardian at the jail right now, currently upgrading the system, which I approved for me a few months ago. Uh, I would like to add an additional four thousand and ninety-six dollars to the project. Uh, that will make the jail completely digital, and we'll have cameras in wherever you need them. But it's gonna be the addition of three more cameras that we've upgraded. And I'd like to pay for this out of the commissary fund.
All right, so y'all heard the sheriff, the sheriff's bill for what he needs to do here. He wants to pay for it out of his commissary fund. Is there a motion to approve that? In belligerent.
I multiply the, that's on cameras, right?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, upgrade the additional cameras for the county jail security system.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, that was unanimous also. And now, I guess we're through with you.
Yeah, I can tell report, hundred and sixty-eight inmates, two on the contract. Thank y'all very much.
See you next, see you next year, Vance.
Well, we're signing over here, so.
Whatever, all those get to sign by every party, Sheriff, I believe.
Well, DPS hasn't signed.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Can you hang around a second for one other item in a minute? I mean, when we get to that jail parking thing, the old historic jail, were you here when that was still? Remember the parking behind that, do you remember when they used to park behind that building? The old jail museum, the museum that used to be a jail? How old are you? Never mind.
I'm only left to do what my mom would get my parents for over those years.
I don't know. I don't know if there's not many people left that's, that remember when that thing was. I can vaguely remember when it was still in operation, but it's been a while. About to posey, maybe? Dave might have shed some light on. Anyway, so let's go to item J, though, which is Judge Moss, County Court of Law, presented by Shane Britton, County Attorney, consideration of possible approval of action regarding authorization to, to, to sell, it says, I'm sure they meant to sell, a Xerox printer, all colored Q eight seventy serial number M M one A two thousand dash three zero seven zero 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 one eight, Brown County tag number two seven one one. On gov deals as a working surplus.
Yeah, this was, you know, traditionally, or most recently, you know, we've always leased copies of yours. This was, I guess, probably the last one that was actually purchased by the county. And it was in County Court of Law, and then they, I don't really know, I really don't know why, but they decided they didn't like it, and they decided to lease one. And so this has just been sitting in the back room, the jury room, for four years, probably. And they're just needing to get rid of it. To declare it a surplus.
I was gonna say, under this item, can we declare it surplus first?
Gonna list, list, just list.
And then authorized to sell it?
Yes.
Okay. I move we declare this printer from the County Court of Law's office as surplus equipment.
Do I mean, we lost our?
It's reformed. Keep going.
Are you sure? I thought we had to be prepped.
It's, I said.
Okay. All right, have a motion in a second. To authorize it as surplus. All in favor, that's unanimous. Do we have the second, the second part of the same? Okay.
Now I move we authorize the sale of this printer on gov deals.
Yeah, Larry.
Oh, y'all.
Right after you hear.
Larry?
Larry, check me that one out, second, start their tires, surplus.
We didn't call a vote on the second one. All in favor on the E. But on gov deals, okay, there's that one. Unanimous again?
Yes. Shaw finally agrees again.
I saw him wiggle. Oh, item K is a discussion item. Um, so it's a discussion of the jail museum parking. Pierce Burnage has been involved in that. Would you like to come on up, Forrest, and sit in the hot seat there and answer any questions we have? I've got one extra draft proposal, and somebody needed a copy of what they're proposing. Good morning. You're welcome to give us a little background on this, yes? This is something I know we started talking about back before we all got involved in the COVID thing. I had met once with Deion Black, who's on the museum board, and, uh.
Yeah, ironically enough, I just ate breakfast with Deion this morning, and we spent about half the time talking about that, the parking lot. I had no, I really didn't even know it was on the agenda today, so I just heard.
Well, we just had a.
I just heard the whole story this morning.
Okay, so you're welcome to, say what you wanna say about it.
Oh, okay. For some time, there's been a problem with parking for the museum and the old jail. The parking is congested, and at times, people have actually come and tried to park for the museum and left without visiting the museum or all sorts of.
Well, that Dave, he's hammering it out there.
The, uh, at times, the parking is, is very critical, and we would like to have some dedicated parking at, at the castle. And we've looked at the, the, the parking lot of the old jail, and apparently, this was used in the past for parking, because it's asphalt and a ramp going on next. And looking at utilizing this as a parking area, we think that if we had an exit ramp also, it would be much easier to park. Because like Phil said, a lot of people have these large trucks, things that are unable back in, I mean, to go in and then back out, and, and, um.
Well, it's, I, I do know that the city requires an entrance and an exit on every parking lot.
Okay.
And I believe there's.
Both of them just left.
I believe there's already an entrance, right?
Yes.
On the alley side.
Right, right. Love it. Well, there's an entrance yet coming out off the north street, just the center right there. An entrance, I guess you could call it. So anyway, you got interrupted, but go ahead. But we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah. We, on a historic structure like this, you have to coordinate with them, with a number of people that state historical information. And so we wanted to bring it to the court's attention and let you know what we were thinking about doing, and then coordinate this effort with, with the state historical information, the city of Brownwood, of course, the county. And, uh, it, we have proposed a course of action that, that we'd like, like to take on this, but it's a multi-step project, because you have to get approval from various agencies on this. So we're, we're in the process of doing, doing this.
Well, we met Wednesday, I believe it was, after lunch, and over there, and we looked at it, and we, we figured probably, probably need to start with the historical, make sure that this is something they'll allow us to do before we spend any more time trying to figure it out. And I'm not an engineer, but I whenever I looked at it with him, and kind of got a basic idea of what I think would be the best way to do it, but the only thing that's, there's a, there's an old, but the old basement in there, there'd be, it looked like it was down in the past. Like you said, it looked like it used to be a parking lot back there. Do you remember parking on the north side of the old jail back in there? I mean, I guess they had to have.
You don't think that's where it actually drove up and got the trailer drawn?
Yeah, by that back door.
Sheriff parked there?
Right, and there's, uh, some gravel, covered in grass, it looks like maybe some pavement was there. But it's real close to the basement wall there, was my only concern, that we talked about it, might want to have to make sure it's structurally safe to pave and drive right that close to that. That basement extends out to that little, it extends out to the north there with entrance going into the, I guess you call it a basement.
Yes.
So that was mine, and I'm not an engineer, but if I look at that, that was my only concern structurally, we might make sure that that was safe to pave right up next to, and we'd have to cut a, cut a hole to go out that northwest corner, come out of that alley. Would be my best guess.
Right. Now, you know, and I've looked at some, some maps, and.
The five-foot drop to.
Yeah, it is, it, it appears that at some point in time, that, that the business on the west side of, of it has kind of taken over the alley, haven't they?
Yes.
And I don't think that they, that's actually, I think that's an alley.
Still an alley, what I understand.
You know.
And actually, there's an alley that runs north and south.
Right.
And there's the one that runs east-west over there, and they're both kind of been occupied to a degree.
Yeah, and, and what is, what is between the, you know where those cars are parked on the west side of the courthouse? You know where they park them?
Yes.
What, what used to be the alley?
Yes.
Is there, is there, is there a wall or something between where they park them and the museum?
Yes.
There's a little rock wall?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's pretty steep, because you can start from it at the back, like you said, it's a, we figured five and a half feet to the top of that rock wall in that highest corner, which is the corner you need to exit out of, so.
And, and you could exit on, on the existing alley to the east there.
Okay.
So if the use of the alley by the business does.
Doesn't affect it.
They would have, they'd have to move some dumpsters, and I think they've got some dumpsters or some occupied part of it. But I think the city is also talking with them on some other parking out there, the old bus, you said something about the old bus terminal there, there was an area there, they might do a little change.
Yes, and get a few more parking places, but, uh, this, the advantage of this to me that it would be exclusively of the use of the museum and all of the jail.
Also, it was gonna be where it was handicapped accessible, so they could come right around from that parking lot to the front of the jail, which had to look like a real small ramp at the front door. I'm sure it had to be designed by somebody to make it legal and proper for handicap, but it didn't look like it, not much of a step to go up into that front door.
No, no, no.
But it would also, it would probably require removing that ramp from the back door, where those handrails and stuff would be and all that. Anyway, it's a, it's a project, and I, I told it, none of us actually have a paving material, or we don't do concrete work, but, you know, we might, when we get to that point, we should go do maybe some prep work or something for it.
Sounds like you've done a lot of concrete work in the last couple of years.
All right. We contracted that out.
He's got the most experience.
Well, I'm just saying, it's something to be contracted out, or something most likely, but, and I think, and they're not talking, they're not asking us to do this whole project out of our money, I understood. They're just, they're just kind of, but historical permission is where we thought we need, we know we're gonna have to go through them first to make sure we got their blessing before you really do much anything else.
And we have not cost it, cost it out because of the historical information requirements.
So that's kind of, we're just letting y'all know what's going on. It's something that started early in the year, but it kind of got dropped for a while because of all the COVID activity. And I think the city was involved in some of the same discussions early on, some other parking right there, too. It's already gone, so. So this is just a heads-up item on the agenda. So, so you'll be aware that, but this Historical Society, I know anytime we did anything to the courthouse, we had to go through, I didn't, I mean, Ray used to have to go through somebody, is it the same entity he's gonna be talking to, I guess, over there?
Yes.
They have the same access to the same people we're talking about.
Thank you.
You bet.
Let us know if you need something or what you find out.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You bet.
We're down to item H. Jennifer Robinson, Robinson, I'm sorry. Consideration of possible approval of action regarding county loan renewals. Are you prepared for that?
Um, just need to request approval to refinance two existing loans with Texas Bank and one with Citizens National Bank. This would be pursuant to section two seventy-one point zero zero five of the Texas Local Government Code, that these obligations be payable from the ad valorem taxes budgeted for payment for the obligations or any lawfully available funds from Brown County General Fund, Precinct Three Fund, and Precinct Four Fund. Pay these obligations in full at the end of the fiscal year as follows. Uh, note number five 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 seven zero from the General Fund, that note is one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight sixteen thirteen. Note number four nine zero three two from Precinct Three, that note is three hundred and five thousand one forty-five seventy-one. And note number five seven three five one from Precinct Four, that note is seventy-seven thousand nine eighty-two eighty-seven. So I just need a motion for those refinancing.
What is, uh, note for the General Fund for?
Obviously, I don't believe.
I think I remember about Precinct Three and Four.
Election equipment.
That's what I was thinking.
I think it's an election.
Election equipment, could be.
Does that sound right? Election equipment that we had financed with the county.
Could be.
Okay.
Uh, the note for, for, from Citizens for Precinct Three, that was equipment.
Yes.
Maintainer's.
Yeah.
Okay. And the note from Precinct Four from Texas Bank, was that the trucks?
Yeah.
The two trucks you still, that you had bought from the cap?
I think one rope grader may be involved in that, maybe, I don't know. I think it's one rope.
You roll them all together.
It's all equipment, all of them, that damn two.
Okay. I move that we authorize the, what is it, renewal of the loans, and take certain language, so pursuant to section two seven one point zero zero five of the Texas Local Government Code, that the court renew certain contracts that are payable from their respective precincts and the General Fund of the county to be, be paid by taxes assessed specifically for the payment of principal and interest on those obligations. The county has sufficient funds on hand to pay in full all of the obligations, both from the General Fund and from the respective precincts. In furtherance of the foregoing, and in accordance with the Texas Constitution and the Texas Local Government Code, section two seven one point zero zero five, the county desire, desires that each year during the terms of the obligation, individually for each of them, the county and the respective precincts pay in full the balances due on each obligation from existing county and precinct revenues, or to assess and collect annually an amount sufficient to pay all interest that may accrue on the obligations, together with a portion of the principal of each obligation. The obligations are each payable to Texas Bank, the County Depository, and Citizens National Bank as follows. Note number five five. Note number five five seven zero, General Fund, an amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars thirteen cents from Texas Bank. Note number two, number four nine zero three two, Precinct Three, an amount of three hundred five thousand one hundred forty-five dollars seventy-one cents to Citizens National Bank. And the third note, number five seven three five one, Precinct Four, an amount of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars eighty-seven cents to Texas Bank. It's further moved that Brown County enter into the obligations under section two seventy-one point zero zero five of Texas Local Government Code, that the obligation be paid from the ad valorem taxes budgeted for payment of the obligations or any lawfully available funds to pay the obligations in full at the end of fiscal year, that the commissary's court find and determine that notice of this action was properly given as required by the Open Media Act, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code.
That's it?
That's it.
All right.
And that's the motion.
I would link you enough. Got it for me? We got a second from Larry. Any other discussion? All in favor? Now, we need to go back and pay the bills, which we jumped over early in the operation here.
Sheriff, meet this.
That was how it worked initially.
Yeah. No.
Yes.
That's what you highlighted in yellow, is what you read, right?
Right. I'll get the chair.
Went and signed anything on it?
Nobody's done that yet.
Simple enough?
Just dinner, dinner, minutes, like that.
All right. I'm sure it's a hundred.
I don't care.
All right, here's your cigarette, too.
Well, it's a state institution justice, so.
That's right. Sit down.
I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I'd love to pay the bills. Pay, pay how long?
Second.
Okay, the second. Any other discussion? All in favor? There you go. I would assume we need to meet again here on the first week, next month, which will be the fifth, October the fifth.
I'll do it though.
I guess I declare that journey will be on October the fifth, unless, unless you have to, subject to that.